Oh man.
Roll call?
Sabers.
Here.
Goldhammer.
Here.
Dosher. McCardle.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Basky. Charts.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum. Start with approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by city council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. Does anyone wish to remove anything?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Charts. Further discussion? What do you want in the audience like to discuss? What's on the consent agenda? Okay, roll call?
Dosher. McCardle.
Hi.
Barrington.
Hi.
Basky. Charts.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Sabers.
Hi.
Goldhammer.
Hi.
Motion carries. Assistant Zipwood, if you need to address the mayor and members of city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Aaron Heap. On behalf of the Palace City Pre-Sturgis Party. Last Thursday, July thirty first, from five to ten P M, Mitchell, South Dakota hosted the nineteenth annual Pre-Sturgis Party. Thank you to the thousands of local community members, kids of all ages, bikers, guests, and visitors who attended this great party, as well as a huge thank you to all those who were a part of, contributed, and supported the Palace City Pre-Sturgis Party twenty twenty-five. We have partners, Clockworks, Jack Daniels, Meet 'Em Asanitation, Strider Bikes, and Cycle Source Magazine. Flagship anchor sponsors, J and L Harley Davidson, Plains Commerce Bank, and Running Store Mitchell. Associate sponsors, The Window Shop, Jan Cloelius, and Real Estate Atria, Quality Wood and Metal Designs, Iverson Auto, and Iverson Powersports. Car show sponsors, thank you again to Three O One Rods, as well as County Fair Food Store and TMA. Bike show sponsors, D and D Exhaust, S and S Cycle. Behind the Scene contributors, Porter Distributing Company, Elwine Brothers, Sun Gold Sports, Graham Sinclair, D W Men's Soccer Team. All the moving parts, Mitchell Police Department, Mitchell Fire EMS. The music entertainment, Weston Frank Live, Shelby Lee Low, the Motorcycle Entertainment, Dialed Action Sports, Moto Trial Stunt Show. The food and beverage trucks, Shorter Snack Shack, Scotty D's Barbecue, Big Daddy's Hungry Dog, Donut Department, County Fair Food Store, Adamo's and Maya's Teriyaki. The selling, non-selling, and nonprofit vendors, Crystal Mama's Crafts, Safe Place of Eastern South Dakota, Tenth Avenue Craft Studio, Cabela's, Core Cares, Mary's Famous Fried Bread, Sioux Falls VA Healthcare System, Palace City Brewing Company, Life's Carnival, Snowshack, Dakota Land Federal Credit Union, Horseman Sports, Inc., Davison County Child Protection Team, Natasha Lynn Design, Sammy's Lemonade, E C's Industry, The Salvation Army in Mitchell, South Dakota, and Demick Dairy. The Kid Zone, featuring Strider Bikes along with TNT Inflatables and Color B Body Art. Corn Palace Cornhole, National Guard, Twin Rivers Old Iron Association. Thank you from the Palace City Pre-Sturgis Party.
Aaron, was there? Aaron, was there unofficial head count estimate?
I would say before six fifty-three that night, there was probably, again, it's a rough estimate, five to sixty-five, five thousand to sixty-five hundred people. From second to seventh, and then obviously mingling in the Corn Palace Plaza, and then fifth main parking lot where the food trucks are.
It was, it was a phenomenal event. I don't, I was able to go down myself. It was unbelievable. I've been, almost every year, I try and make my way down that, down there. And wow, what an event. It was just totally thrilling. I didn't see our mayor there. Were you there that night?
No, I didn't make it.
You know, I feel like that was a real missed opportunity, Mayor. You know, historically, I believe that the mayor has been there and has done a welcome, and, and we hope you enjoy our city proclamation. I mean, this was your opportunity to really speak to five to six, five or six or seven thousand people that are there, that are gathered on our streets. And where were you? You needed to be there. This was a, a chance for us to really make a statement. And I, I guess I, I feel like that was, um, like, if you knew you weren't gonna be there, I think it would have been nice if you'd asked Kevin to go and make that proclamation, because that's what he is. I mean, he's the president of the council. And if you couldn't be there, I feel like that was something that you needed to delegate to someone else, because that was, it was, I mean, to me, it felt obvious that there was this really important thing missing, and that was an official welcome by our city to all of these people who had gathered. I had taken a couple of girls to breakfast for their birthdays that morning, and I met the barrel master of, what's the company? Jack Daniels, the Jack Daniels Barrel Master. And I was told there, you know, he's, this guy's a big deal. So I have a picture with the barrel master of Jack Daniels whiskey, which I think is kind of funny, just being me. But, but we had some dignitaries. We had people from important industries. And we didn't have that official welcome, so I feel like, I mean, I feel like that's something that we really missed about, and I hope next year that, you know, you'll make a point of being there and welcoming people and making sure that they know that we're glad they're there. I personally, I can tell you that there are people who have literally moved here because they fell in love with our city at that event. And they came, and now they're business owners. So, you know, we, we need to make sure that we celebrate that.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
To respond to your comment about the mayor not being at the event, I spent two days at Arts in the Park, almost all day, every day. And I didn't see any city council members supporting the mayor's event.
My kids were moving last weekend, and so I wasn't able to be there. I was helping them move to a different.
I understand, but there's a lot more of you than there is of him, and I saw him everywhere, working, working his butt off. To, and I spoke to almost every single vendor there, and every single vendor wanted to sign up again for next year. And, you know, it seems like there's a big divide in terms of support, and you guys need to communicate and work together on all of Mitchell's events.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? And please state your name. Just gotta reset the clock.
I'll take that over for three minutes. I am Lacy Bollock. I've lived here my whole life. To be honest, there's only a few of you on the council that I actually know. I may have voted for you guys and probably don't know, but since the whole prison thing, and even before the prison thing, I've been reading a lot, paying attention, and quite honestly, I'm pretty disappointed in our city. I've lived here my entire life, and we are in a redundant cycle of doing nothing about the things that matter. We have, no offense to anyone on the council, we have a twenty million dollar proposal for a Corn Palace expansion that has not even been talked about with anybody in the city. Someone said that was exactly the proposal we were looking for, I think was what was quoted in the paper. What, who wanted that proposal? Who, who decided that we wanted an expansion? That's what I'd like to know. Nobody ever answers those questions about who's coming up with these ideas or who's supporting these ideas, because it's not the people. Then I look at, we are now putting money towards a possible indoor sporting facility, another seventeen million at least. We have been passed up over and over for years, watching state tournaments go from one spot to the next as we watch revenue just pass us by. We have a nice town with lots of opportunity. There is no reason why we shouldn't be building and events and are putting both of that towards it. We have put money towards tennis and pickleball recently. There's no reason to put more money to a specific group. The majority of people in our town cannot afford those sports. And if they afford those sports, it's probably not the only sport they play. You guys are so disconnected from the people in your community. I really don't understand why, first off, to even ask why he wasn't at an event when he is more involved with anyone in the, in the community than anyone else out here that I see, in all honesty, is crazy. In forty years, I've not heard any one of your stance on anything until it's time to vote, and then I find out. Not one of you seeks public input. Not one of you will go against the big dogs in Mitchell. And I'm telling you right now, they're the reason that this community is not striving, the whole reason. You need to be encouraging employers here to compete with national wages, not with Menards or Taco John's here in this town. Compete with wages that are nationwide for that same thing. You need to look at the community input. You guys are so disconnected. It's insane, absolutely insane. It's time we start thinking about everybody in this community, not just a few people that you guys.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
How's it going, fellas?
Great.
I'd like to maintain my anonymity. So when you guys were talking about the prison, I thought it was pretty funny how you guys were advocating for more felons to be in town. You kind of talked about how they were, oh, just drug addicts or alcoholics, you know, and I'm sure they committed the murders or felonies while they're drunk, you know. It was pretty funny how you guys advocated for them. I personally prefer felons, you know. I think their stories are better, they're more fun. When it comes to politicians, you guys are all guaranteed to lie to me, all right, every one of you. When you come and say, start talking shit about the mayor for not showing up, where were you at another place? Maybe he had an excuse. It's funny, because he actually did show up. He did talk to the community when it came to the prison, all right? He, he, he brings his thoughts out, whether they're good or not. He brings them out. No, you guys are scared to say anything. You're all chicken shits. You hide behind your own, your little boards and, and the decisions are made for you. You don't seem to have any thoughts of your own when it comes to, uh, the process itself. It's kind of disgusting, all you guys. That's about it. We, the, the city is tired of you people, all of you, all of you, except for the mayor. You're the only one that seems to actually care. You do put yourself out there. Nobody else wants to, nobody else wants to state their opinion, chicken shits. Anyway, I think you should do more. You should fire somebody. You know who that person is. You should fire him and make a statement. They're taking you off boards. They're taking off your little councils or whatever. They don't want your opinion around, because you're not going along to get along, are you? So keep it up. You're doing a good job. People like you, all right? So just keep it up. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I'd just like to make a quick comment from the last meeting when Mr. Smith and I got accused of being unethical. But I, I'd like to give the truth in that hearsay and made up stories. On February seventh, Mr. Councilman Basky stated that Jeff and I met at the chamber's office and met with the tourism director. I have never met with a tourism director. I know the state tourism director, Jim Hag, Haggen fairly well, but I haven't talked to him for a couple of years. I checked at the chamber. We were, we were never at the chamber on February seventh, so that was a made up story. And as us, the four of us that went to Brookings were four people on a Corn Palace committee that were, were asked to go to Brookings by the director of the new, what's it called? First Bank or whatever state, it used to be, it's a new stadium up there. They wanted us to go look and see what they did to that stadium or to that arena, so we knew what to do if we're gonna do anything at the Corn Palace. They wanted to show us things they liked, things they didn't like. So we went up there, four people on a committee. I think we reported, I think we had a committee meeting the next day, and we, we reported back to the committee what we saw, what they liked, what we didn't like, what they had to do different if, if they were to do it over again. It wasn't like we were being secretive. And Councilman Basky said he was in Brookings and saw Jeff Smith. Jeff Smith wasn't one of the four. He's not even on the committee with us, so he wasn't even with us. And then, just, you know, the title that the daily is unethical, you know, the council was unethical. There was nothing unethical. There was nothing hidden about it. There's nothing secretive about it. And I think that probably everybody in this room has probably been to a meeting at the chamber. How many people here have been to a meeting at the chamber since they've been on the council? I think all of us. So there's nothing sneaky going on about that, so I don't know where that came from. And the last thing I'd like to say is, as, as it do to Mr. Basky and probably Stuart Hanson saying that we have a CEO of Mitchell that runs the, there is no CEO of Mitchell. The mayor's elected position, the council's elected position, I'm elected by my word. I, I'm, I'm the voice of my word for word to John. And the rest of these people are elected by their different words, and the mayor's elected by the city. So we don't work for anybody. We work for the people of the city, all of us. And that's what we need to do, and we haven't, we, all of us need to do a better job of it. It needs to be done better. If we're gonna get anything done in this community, we all gotta work together. And we gotta work for the people. And that's what I try to do, and every decision I make, I look at it and I do it for the citizens of Mitchell. I guess my time's up.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Evening. My name's Doug Backlin. How are you guys doing this evening? It's been a while. I was sitting in that seat about seventeen years ago, Timmy. I'm here to express a little frustration with quite a few on the council. In regards to Mr. Roger Music, I don't understand why you guys don't give him the respect and attention that that man deserves. There's not one person in this community that has done more for this community in the last century than him. With the amount of wealth and jobs that that man's created, you might want to pay attention to him. I mean, it's unbelievable. At least just show him the respect and attention that man deserves. I, that's all I have to say. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, moving on. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the city council to recess and sit as the board of adjustment.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. McCardle. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing an action on application for James Bowder variance permit. James Bowder has applied for a variance permit for a rear yard setback of fourteen foot versus twenty-five foot for an attached accessory building. The building is located at seven hundred West Norway Avenue, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There were three letters returned in favor of this. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. The applicant would like to move the single unattached garage away from their place to a new location, and then build a double car attached garage to this site. Their lot right now is seventy-five foot deep. Their current house doesn't meet the correct setback to the rear, but that'd be grandfathered in at this point in time. All the other, the front and side yards would meet for setbacks. So for the attached garage, it's just the rear setback that they're requesting. Can I answer any questions that you have or the applicants here if you have any questions for them?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing an action on application for Mitchell Telecom variance permit. Mitchell Telecom has applied for a variance permit for a front yard setback of twenty-five feet versus thirty feet for an attached accessory building. This is located at fifteen twenty-four Commerce Street, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There was one letter returned in favor. Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval with removing the word attached to the description. Copy and paste got me. It's not an attached accessory building, so it's just a single building by itself. The applicant stated in their application, when they were pouring concrete out there, they found it was too wet to the east from where they wanted to put it, so they moved it a little bit further to the west. But then when they were also doing it, realized that their setback was from the property and not from the back of the curb, so that's why they put it where they did. So the building is set there. It's a twelve by twenty-eight structure that just holds their equipment for Mitchell Telecom. I can answer any questions that you have for me with that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
I just wanted to make a comment, that the same comment I made at planning and zoning were, were actually, the building's already there. They went and moved it without asking, and I'm not upset about that. Just, to me, this goes back to, when we do building permits, if we required a professional survey, we wouldn't be doing this. And if they move it, they have to come back again. So just a thought, and I'll, I'll second the motion to approve it, but I don't like that people are just moving buildings and setting them there and then coming back and asking us after the fact.
Okay, further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to set the date for board of adjustment hearing, and I'm gonna change the date, eight eighteen of twenty-five.
Move to set the date.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reconvene a city council. Entertain a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn and the city council to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Basky, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve a special event permit application for the Corn Palace Plaza for Dr. Fieldgood on August ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Parking lot closure of fifty dollar fee and a noise permit of zero dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Amendment number one to agreement A twenty twenty dash, A twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one. South Plant Construction Phase with H D R for wastewater treatment plant improvement project phase two, project number twenty twenty-two dash zero one. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. The city council approved design and bidding phase services for the south wastewater plant improvements at your November twenty-first, twenty-two council meeting. The bid was awarded to John T. Jones at the June seventeenth, twenty-four council meeting. The attached amendment provides construction phase services for project management, construction administration, and operations manual development. City staff does recommend city council approval to the agreement with H D R Engineering on an hourly not to exceed basis total of one million four hundred forty-eight thousand, as outlined in the attached amendment. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion?
Yeah, I, so this was approved in twenty twenty-two. So talk to me about the delay or what, then it was awarded on the, in June, over a year ago. So is there a reason that it's been taking so long?
It was a big project. We were also, also waiting for the north wastewater treatment plant to get done before we started this one.
Okay.
So we could bid them subsequently. And then also, we had S R F funding with this that we had lined up as well.
Okay.
It's a big project.
Big project.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-six. Financial assistance agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation, Division of Air, Rail, and Transit for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Airport Infrastructure Grant A I G for construction of revenue-producing hangar A I P with the following number as shown on the agenda. Mr. Schrader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is for our airport hangar project. We've had a lot of agreements come to council for the federal side. This is the state side, which just piggybacks off the federal side. It, it's the same one million seventy thousand six hundred fifty dollars with ninety-five percent state share and five percent city share. And with that, staff recommends approval, and I can answer any other questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McCardle.
Second.
And by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven. Acknowledgement agreement with South Dakota Housing Development Authority, S D H A. H D A for tax increment district number thirty-six, T I D number thirty-six. Mr. Johnson.
All right, so this is just a short agreement that South Dakota Housing and Mahi requested that the city complete. It's in relation to Mahi's financing through that organization. Really, it doesn't change anything for us as far as the T I F is concerned. We're still passing the increment on to the developer just as the project plan and the developer agreement provided. So nothing changes for us. It's just a, an agreement that they requested we, we sign on to.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement A twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight. Work order number three with BAR engineering. Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Council. BAR engineering was approved to proceed with work order number one on April fifth of twenty-one, and work order number two on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Work order number one analyzed hydraulic versus mechanical dredging. Dredge spoiled sites, drawdown feasibility, and provided a report on their findings. Phase two of the design focused on the Lake Drawdown project, continued design of the dredging project, and water quality evaluation. Additional services for work order number two included design iterations to accommodate the pedestrian bridge over the spillway, review of previous alum treatments with presentation, maintaining irrigation to city facilities, permitting efforts for the dredge portion of the project, review of possible water quality improvements at the Kiner property, and providing additional materials and attending meetings for public information. Work order number three will provide services to finalize and bid the lake water drawdown project, finalize the lakeshore assessment, services to finalize and bid the dredge project, finalize permitting, and continue project management. This does not include construction phase services. Staff does recommend city council approval of the attached agreement from BAR and an hourly not to exceed contract amount of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred. I can answer any questions you may have.
I'll ask the question I always ask. I, I hear the permitting is still a problem for, for releasing the water down, downstream. Do we have the permits yet?
We do not have our permits yet, no. We are, they should have been submitted either late last week or will be early this week. BAR has been in contact with the U S Army Corps of Engineers. We don't foresee issues moving forward with our permitting. I believe there was an email question from James River Water Development District that BAR, the state, and the city will be working through responding to their, to their questions.
And Joe, this is within the budgeted or planned expense, correct, or is this something out of the?
We showed this going against our, our contingencies. So originally, we showed that we had four million in contingency. Now our new contingency is three million two hundred one thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Approved.
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Charts, second by Mr. Basky. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight. Resolution for honorific naming of city land. So I'll start with this one. So after Lou Seibert passed away, former mayor, probably sat in his chair as I am today, wanted to think about something cool to do for the family and him, and just honor the, the man and the position. And after reading all the, the great achievements he has completed in his life. the great achievements he has completed in his life, I thought this would be a cool thing. Uh, the public beach currently doesn't have a name associated with it, so and I think he lived in that neighborhood, so I think it would be really neat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hurdle, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion?
I just, I just want to, yeah.
What Bob's or Lou has done for the city, you know, there's nothing he hasn't supported financially uh, through the years since I've been here, you know, everything is Dakota pump is done personally and, and business-wise. You know, I don't know if he had an enemy in town, well-liked, well-respected guy. So I think this is a very, very nice, nice thing to be done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Dan. Just want to echo too. Um, obviously I have the pleasure to serve with Lou, um, as it uh, was stated. I think we came on board at the same year back in two thousand and six, I believe it was. And so I've been serving with several mayors over the years and it was definitely uh, an honor to be able to serve with him and what he taught to the council and, and working with them and, and just what he did for the community is just uh, we've been blessed to have somebody like that. And the, the great thing about it too is just the family in general, which majority of them do live here in town. Um, and this how their family has uh, continued to step up and carry on that Seibert tradition for what they do within our community. So it's just a great family to have part of our, part of our city and part of Mitchell and uh, continue to welcome here as long as they're here. It's uh, they've been, we've been blessed with them, so.
Yeah, when I went um, to his service, I told the family too, which he was at the state legislature for years and then ran for, for mayor and, and obviously served on numerous boards um, here in town. And I told the family that I wanted to thank them for sharing Lou. Because that was quite a, uh, an undertaking that the number of, of years he spent out in Pierre and then sitting as, as a mayor and, and it's, it's not easy. So I, I just wanted the family to know how much people in Mitchell appreciated uh, the, his ability to serve.
Thanks for those kind words. Okay, anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Hearing and first reading on ordinance O twenty-two-five dash ten, amending title ten zoning regulations ten dash six A dash three neighborhood shopping conditional use permit alcohol sales on sales, Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Um, I was asked by the mayor to bring this forward to Planning Commission and to council, um, to put this as a conditional use under neighborhood shopping. Um, that way, anybody that would have to apply for this would have to be a conditional use, so the neighbors would have a chance to say, get notifications for it. Um, the areas of town that this would apply to, neighborhood shopping is along Sandborne Street, Lawler. Um, there's some on Matty, Rowley, First Avenue, um, and then all that golf courses as well, there's some of it. Um, in the past, there's been some of these businesses that have tried to rezone or get a conditional use for something like this and it has not worked. Um, that's why the mayor asked me to bring this forward at this time, um, so that they could possibly do this. Um, with it being a conditional use, also there would have to be licenses available that you would also have to approve at that time. So it's not just a blanket approval by having this as a conditional use. There's still other two steps that would have to go forward for this. I can answer any questions that you have for me or if you have any questions that Justin needs to answer as well.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, this is just not, you don't automatically get an alcohol license. You still have to go and go through the whole process and
Two processes.
Two processes. It's just giving people an opportunity to take a chance on opening another restaurant or another store.
But it doesn't allow the neighbors to have input. Is that right?
It, it would if it was a conditional use. That's why
Okay.
Initial discussions were a permitted use because you'd still have to go through the process of having a liquor license or beer and wine license available at that time, which the board would have to approve. Discussions was, well, let's make it a conditional use, so that way there's two steps that go with it. The conditional use process of notice all the neighbors within a hundred and forty feet, publishing the paper, signed, posted, planning commission make a recommendation, you guys have the final say at board of adjustment. But that also means that there has to be a liquor license that's available or beer and wine license that's available for it as well.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Okay, further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this?
Uh, again, my name's Doug Backland. Um, seventeen years ago, we were talking about this exact same thing. And uh, I, I think this is a, a smart move, guys. It's making it business-friendly. It, I mean, n- neighborhoods and across towns in South Dakota are moving this way to where you have a little neighborhood where you can get some shopping done, you can maybe have a beer, you can have a burger and you can walk home. So people aren't driving. Um, and this is a, a good move and you guys still can put conditions on. So I urge the passage of this as I tried to get it done seventeen years ago. And there was two of you that still, I hope you change your vote on this now. And vote, vote for it this time.
Doug, before you leave, thank you for buying the Freedom Station and cleaning that area up over there.
And there's a joke that's on the sign, so that'll be changed.
I've had like five hundred people ask me what that means and I was like Okay, anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, okay, executive session according to SDCL one dash three-five dash two, personal and legal.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, there will be no action after executive session.